All right, we are recording, so Cheryl Olson, go ahead and start us off.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, June 17th, 2021. For the record, my name is Alyssa Olson, and I am the Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021 due to the declared local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Commissioner Baxley. Caprini. Esmiley.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Marwa.
Here.
McGuire. Meyer.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Schrader. Sweetsie. Baxley. Caprini. McGuire. Schrader. Sweetsie. There are five members present.
All right, we have a quorum. With that, we will proceed to the agenda. A copy of the agenda was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, which is available at limbs minneapolis mn.gov. Commissioners, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Commissioner Esmiley.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second, Meyer.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, could you please call the roll on the motion?
Commissioner Baxley. Caprini. Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
McGuire. Meyer.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
I'm here, but I don't know what we're voting on, so I will abstain.
It's adoption of the agenda.
Oh, aye, all for it.
Fantastic. And Esmiley.
Aye.
There are six ayes.
All right, that motion passes, and we've adopted the agenda. Next up is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 27th, 2021. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes? Commissioner Ford.
I move, we accept the minutes of May 27th.
And Commissioner Esmiley.
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley. Caprini. Esmiley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
McGuire. Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Aye.
Cherylson.
Aye.
There are six ayes.
All right, that motion passes. Up next is the consent agenda. There's two items tonight. The first item is item number four, a land sale for 3601 44th Street East, and staff is Madel Duñias.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Madel Duñias, and I'm a planner in long-range planning. So the first item that I have today is item number four, which again is a land sale of 3601 44th Street East for the Snelling Yards development. The parcel is guided as urban neighborhood and corridor six. The property has been replatted to accommodate two four-story residential buildings, which are allowed under the future land use and built form guidance of Minneapolis 2040. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that this land sale is consistent with the future land use and built form categories of the comprehensive plan. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, are there any questions, or would someone like to make a motion for consistency with the comprehensive plan? Commissioner Meyer.
That the item is consistent with the 2040 plan.
Commissioner Marwa.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley. Caprini.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Esmiley.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
McGuire. Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Aye.
And Cheryl Olson.
Aye.
There are seven ayes.
All right, that motion passes. The next item is item number five, Snelling Yards Senior Housing Tiff District Plan, and staff is again Madel Duñias.
So this Tiff District for the Snelling Yards Senior Housing Project has been prepared to help finance the construction of the first 100-unit, four-story affordable apartment building. This project, again, is the first phase of the new planned unit development for Snelling Yards, and it was approved previously by the Planning Commission on July 6, 2020. So the Tiff District Plan establishes a new housing Tiff District to finance various public redevelopment costs and includes a budget for the use of tax increment revenue generated by the new Tiff District. The property satisfies both income tests as established by the Internal Revenue Code, since 95% of the apartment units will be affordable at 50% AMI, and 5% will be affordable at 80% AMI. The city of Minneapolis seeks to achieve the following objectives through the establishment of this Tiff District. Number one, to increase the number of housing units and choices within the city. Second, to provide housing units affordable to persons of families of low and moderate income. Third, to support strong and diverse neighborhoods where people choose to live. And four, to promote sustainable development. Staff finds that the Snelling Yards Senior Housing Tiff District Plan is consistent with Minneapolis 2040 and recommends that the City Planning Commission recommend approval to the City Council. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions, or would someone like to make a motion for consistency with the comprehensive plan?
Motion that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
And that's Commissioner Marwa.
It is, sorry.
All right. And Commissioner Esmiley.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley. Caprini.
Aye.
Esmiley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
McGuire. Meyer.
Aye.
Olson. Cherylson, sir.
Aye.
I'm using the wrong roll calls, as you can tell. Schrader. And Sweetsie.
Aye.
There are seven ayes.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you, Madel. All right, up next is our two discussion items. The first one is item number six, France 50 mixed-use at 4901 to 4921 France Avenue South, and staff is Shanna Seether.
So this is Kimberly. I'm going to be presenting this item on Shanna's behalf tonight, and so bear with me. I don't normally get to fumble through the presentation side of things here, so I am going to attempt to share my screen. Hopefully, it is up. But let me know if it's not.
It's up.
We see it.
All right, thank you. So the project before you is a mixed-use project at 4901 to 4921 France Avenue South, so located just one half-block north of the Goods and Services Corridor at 50th Street West. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use building with 45 dwelling units and about 16,500 square feet of retail space in this location. It would have... Well, I'll start. The zoning here is currently R2B and the Corridor Four Built Form Overlay District. The property is also in the Shoreland Overlay District due to a wetland in the city of Edina, about 500 feet away, which impacts the required applications here. So here's just an overview of the development site. You can see it's located near the 50th and France node. And some photos of the existing location. So this is the existing context on the site. The applicant is proposing two levels of below-grade parking, ground-floor commercial totaling 16,518 square feet, along with some residential amenity space, and then units on the upper floors totaling 45 dwelling units. It's a mix of one and two bedrooms and one plus den, and then three-bedroom units on the fifth floor. So here is a view of the building as you're looking at it from France Avenue. The applicant is proposing to establish this development as a planned unit development. The maximum size in the Corridor Four Built Form Overlay District is 28,000 square feet. The existing lot exceeds 28,000 square feet, so the only way to propose a project on a lot greater than that 28,000-square-foot maximum is to do it through a planned unit development. So as part of the planned unit development, the applicant is requesting a series of exceptions, including just 10 points to establish the PUD. They're requesting an exception to the maximum size of an individual building. The maximum size is 89,600 square feet, and the proposed GFA of this building is 102,799 square feet. And then they're also requesting an exception to the front yard setback along France Avenue South. The existing zoning of the site is R2B, and the applicant is requesting to rezone the site to OR2 as part of the project. If this were rezoned to a commercial site, that would be supported by the existing adopted policy for this location, but consent signatures are required to go to a commercial district here. So with that, the applicant is proposing OR2 zoning, which does have setback requirements that wouldn't be required in a commercial district. So that is being requested for flexibility on that through the planned unit development. The other applications required include, so the petition to rezone to OR2, a conditional use permit to establish the planned unit development, a conditional use permit to increase height in the Shoreland Overlay District from two-and-a-half stories to five stories or 70 feet. The applicant is also requesting a variance to the maximum size of a neighborhood serving retail sales and service use in the OR2 district. The maximum allowed is 4,000 square feet, and the ground-floor commercial space is shown at 16,508 square feet. There's also a variance requested to the maximum lot coverage from 70% to 76%, and then the site plan review application. In terms of amenities for the planned unit development, the applicant is proposing underground parking, outdoor open space, decorative pavers, a water feature, and a recycling storage area. You can note in the staff reports how we've evaluated consistency with the comprehensive plan here and also evaluated the amenities that the applicant is proposing for the planned unit development. I won't go into great detail on them, but part of the consideration here today is whether or not the amenities that are being proposed are really the appropriate amenities to offset the exceptions requested by the applicant. So the maximum building size, the front yard setback, and the establishment just overall. So this property is community mixed-use in terms of the future land use map. As I noted, commercial zoning would be supported here. There is commercial zoning directly adjacent to the site, but the rezoning signatures can be fairly robust, and it can be, you know, a difficult process. So the applicant is proposing OR2 here. This is in the Corridor Four Built Form District, so the maximum height in that district is four stories. The applicant is proposing a five-story building, so they are requesting to increase the maximum height by providing some additional amenities through that. In terms of the feedback being requested here, staff is specifically looking for feedback on the proposed building height. So the applicant has requested that height increase by providing a mixed-use building with a large retail tenant space on the first floor. The Shoreland Overlay District here also, again, requires that conditional use permit that is due to a wetland in Edina. The maximum floor area in a planned unit development is limited to 89,600 square feet, and the building size here exceeds that. They're proposing a 102,799-square-foot building, so exceeding the maximum size of a building in Corridor Four. To increase the maximum gross floor area of individual buildings within the PUD, the Planning Commission has to find that the development's layout, amenities, and building scale are consistent with the intent of the built form policies of the comprehensive plan. So we're looking specifically for feedback about ways the applicant could break up the length of the building on both the east and west sides to make this something that's more consistent with the intent of the Corridor Four District. I'll dive into that more just a little bit here. Also looking for feedback on that maximum size of a retail sales and service use, so the proposed space is about four times greater than the maximum that's allowed in the OR2 district. The maximum lot coverage comes into play here because there's OR2 zoning and not commercial zoning. So the maximum lot coverage is 70%, and the applicant's proposing 76%. And then also just requesting feedback on the amenities, so the amount of underground parking, outdoor open space, decorative pavers, and the recycling storage area. You know, just overall, I think we want to flag here that this is really... The appearance of this building appears to be more consistent with the appearance of a building in the Corridor Six Built Form District and not the Corridor Four Built Form Overlay District. That's why we're really specifically looking for feedback on whether or not... And I can keep going through the slides here so you can see all of the elevations. Whether or not the massing of the building here has been broken up in a way that would justify the increase in height in the Corridor Four Built Form District. You know, this comp plan is fairly new. The built form overlay districts are still fairly new, but the allowed scale in each built form district is a central part of the Minneapolis 2040 built form policies, particularly in the interior and corridor-built form districts. So it's not a case where 2040 is just calling for big buildings everywhere. This is very intentionally designated as Corridor Four. And building scale is really a matter of a few factors. It's height, bulk, but it's also the lot size and the building length. So if the project is exceeding the maximum lot size, so it has to be done through a PUD, and then also asking for height increases and variances of the maximum FAR, or in this case, variance or flexibility through the PUD for the maximum lot size, then that's what leads staff to believe that this is a building that would be more consistent with the Corridor Six Built Form District and not the Corridor Four Built Form District. And you know, just really highlighting that our built form regulations now do match the policies in the comp plan. So again, they're fairly new, but we're really committed to not granting a significant amount of variances to allow deviation from the brand-new regulations that very intentionally designated areas of the city like this as Corridor Four. And you know, that's something that our elected officials and policymakers have also committed to, and it's a commitment that we've made to the public to make things more predictable in terms of what developments people can expect to see in various places around the city. So I'm going to close there. I know that got a little bit longer than it typically would, but I can stand for any questions, and then I believe the applicant is here with a presentation of their own as well.
Thanks, Kimberly. Does anyone have any questions for Kimberly?
Yes, this is Keith Ford. I'm sorry I didn't type it out first. Kimberly, could you summarize, or list again, rather, what the amenities that the developer thinks he is providing?
Kimberly, you're muted.
I lost that part of my screen, I was saying. And then I also lost the part that was going to allow me to unmute myself. So the amenities being proposed by the applicant are the two levels of underground parking, the outdoor open space, which really, you know, staff's analysis is that the way the outdoor open space has been distributed amongst, you know, along the site doesn't really engage pedestrians. It's located between the building and the surface parking lot, and we're interested in feedback on that. Decorative pavers is another amenity that's worth three points, so we allow points for decorative surfacing and then a recycling storage area within the building.
Commissioner Ford, did you have anything else?
No, I have some comments later on, but thank you for the answer.
Go ahead, Commissioner Marwa.
Hey, Kimberly, I have a quick question about the OR2. It says it's only 45 units in this building. Considering at 50, they would have to include affordable housing, right? Because IZ kicks in at 50. What is the rest of the building supposed to be, is used for? I mean, this is a massive space to only, to kind of be cutting in right below the 50 limit. Is it going to be office? That mean in the OR zoning that they're intended, I guess, what's the rest of the building used for?
So the applicant could answer that more specifically, but the plans indicate that the first floor would be programmed as retail space, and right now it's shown as one large retail space or general retail sales and service space. It's not shown as being office, and then the 45 dwelling units on the upper floors are a little bit larger than we would typically see. You know, it's one bedroom plus den, two bedrooms, and then some three-bedroom units.
Okay, but there's not office on the upper floors as well. It just looks like a...
No.
Technically, a building that would be larger than 45 units otherwise. Okay.
Yeah.
I can ask the applicant.
I can pull the floor plan back up here. So you can see the two levels of below-ground parking, and then all of this purple on the ground floor is just shown as commercial space with some common space for residents. And then the upper floors, you know, other than the common space on the second floor, are all dwelling units.
Okay, thank you. I can ask the applicant more details then.
All right, I'm not seeing any more questions, so if the applicant team would like to present now, they can go ahead.
Commissioners and Kimberly, this is Tom Dillon speaking. I'm part of the ownership group and the development group. I'm their owner's representative for the project, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And really, as Kimberly outlined, we are here for feedback from the Committee of the Whole on these preliminary plans. I do want to just highlight that we, as a company, currently own all seven land parcels and all the properties here along France Avenue are rental properties currently. Our timing on this project, if approved as we go through the process, would be a start in the spring of next year, 2022, and completion somewhere around spring or summer of 2023. I really don't have a lot to add. I think Kimberly did a very nice job of summarizing it, and the staff report was obviously very helpful, but we also have Craig Hartman with us, who is our architect and a principal at Momentum Design Group. And Craig and his team have put a lot of time into developing this very preliminary plan, so I would like to just turn it over to Craig and let him walk you through it.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. You know, I think I want to start kind of macro, and then we'll work our way down to the building, and I'll try to keep it brief. You know, when we first were presented the site, you know, we saw this as sort of a natural growth of the 50th and France commercial node. You know, it's a great opportunity for us to add residential density to sort of an existing commercial corridor. It strengthens sort of the local economy, and frankly, pedestrian-focused local economy. So we were excited to kind of be presented with this site and the opportunity to work on this. You know, we really do think that this building will serve, you know, a demographic that's frankly existing to the neighborhood. It's going to give people a new option to stay in the neighborhood they love, maybe without the maintenance of a home, or, you know, if they're seasonal, something like that. You know, I think it gives people a great opportunity to stay where they love, you know, and stay in the area that they love. You know, the general design intent of the building, you know, we looked at it as... It was really focused on a scheme where the building would speak softly and elegantly. You know, it's, you know, we want this building to be beautiful today, but also many years from now, and really be timeless. You know, to that sense, you know, we've kept the materials very simple. We have brick, painted fiber cement, paneling, and metal trim. We've got large expanse of the glazing, both at street level as well as on the upper floors, as well as outdoor space for all the dwelling units above. As was noted, our vehicle traffic is relegated to the alley. We enter off of the alley into our two levels of parking below grade. I want to talk about the fifth story just a little bit. It is a partial fifth story. You know, we looked at that a lot, and both from a sightline standpoint, but also from a shadowing perspective. You know, the increased setbacks at this level have really been tailored to minimize the impact of that additional story from neighboring properties. And finally, you know, we did receive some initial feedback from staff, as Kimberly mentioned, regarding the open space to the south of the building and the idea that could it, should it be relocated to more of a midpoint in the building and, you know, present, I don't know, you know, you'd almost call it a rest stop, you know, off the sidewalk, you know, a place for people to get off of, get out of the circulation path, sit down, you know, water feature in that area, you know, create that node. And I think, I think we are excited at the opportunity to maybe look at that to help break up the maps and help the building be more consistent with Corridor Four. You know, we're hearing feedback, and that's kind of the point of this, is that it might read too long. It's too continuous. I can go to a plan real quick. You know, we did try to break up the middle area, and admittedly, it's fairly slight. I don't know if you can see my cursor. You know, we've got kind of a seating area in the middle of the building, or about the midpoint of the site. But this is something that we could play up much further and sort of redirect some of that open space and really give people a place, you know, as you're circulating up the sidewalk, a place to get off, get off and sit, and get off and relax, spend time, things like that. So I think with that, I won't go any further. I think I'll turn it over to Commissioners, and I'll welcome your feedback and questions.
Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. So I'm receptive to the applicant's requests. I feel like for the 2040 plan, like what we've communicated is, you know, you can have up to, like, the Corridor Four... what we've communicated is, you know, um, you, you can have up to like the corridor four and then if there are amenities or the things that justify bonuses, you can, you can possibly get up to the next level, which would be corridor six. So the, the question is like, if there are sufficient amenities or benefits, um, to justify them. And I, I think, um, like particularly for, um, the setback request, I think that definitely makes sense. I feel like this kind of building seems to, to fit in, um, with that node. Looking at the aerial photos in the packet, it looks like there are, um, nearby buildings that look larger than this one. And I would agree that this seems to be like a, a natural connection, um, of that node. I, I do think that there are a couple of things that, uh, could be maybe added that I would, I would look on favorably, um, as Commissioner Marwa was noting. If, if, if the threshold was, was fifty, and this is just short of that, that for residential units, I would look favorably on getting to that threshold and, um, in, including, um, some, some affordable units. And then, um, I, I, I wanted to ask the applicant, um, specifically, uh, to the shoreline overlay. I, I, I feel it, it would be appropriate, um, especially in, in that case, um, to have additional features above and beyond what you would be otherwise required, uh, for stormwater treatment. So I wanted to ask if part of your features are including things like, I don't know, rain gardens or other things that could, uh, be directly connected to that.
Yeah, and to respond to that, Commissioner Meyer, we, we, one of our amenities is to provide, uh, the green roof, which we feel like would, would, um, you know, help capture their rainwater, delay the rainwater. You'll clean it to some degree. We are, we are providing that one as one of our, as one of our pieces, I guess. So.
And if I could, commissioners, if I could just add one item around, uh, around the forty-five to fifty unit range. Uh, we have conducted some very preliminary market, um, uh, analysis, uh, with a third party firm and they have helped guide our, uh, preliminary, uh, unit mix and unit sizing and the preliminary information they provided to date about this portion of the city and this location and with the surrounding, uh, community is that the, the project should, uh, or they recommend that it should, uh, lead it or lend itself to, um, larger units. I think maybe Kimberly said that, um, the, the units are, are larger versus the typical Minneapolis type product. And of course it depends on where you are in the city. But I think, you know, in the current market, units on average in the, in the city of Minneapolis are somewhere between, I don't know, I'll take a guess, seven hundred and twenty-five square feet to just sub eight hundred square feet on average. And Craig, you'll have to help me. I don't remember the, the average unit size, but I think we're, are we about eleven hundred square foot per, per unit or something like that?
Yeah, we're overall average, uh, we're, we're actually a little bit larger than that yet.
Okay. Yeah. So, uh, just, I just wanted to make the simple point that, um, uh, market intelligence, intelligence is just leading us at this point to, uh, to that design towards a larger unit versus what you might typically see in, in other parts of the city of Minneapolis. So, thank you.
That was all for me. Thank you.
All right, um, Commissioner Marwa, go ahead.
Hi, um, I have, I have a lot of thoughts about this building. Um, I think there's a lot of, you know, I don't think the amenities that you guys are offering are nearly on par with what you're asking, to be frank. I think the design of this building looks like a nineteen eighties office building. I mean, I think this is a building opening in twenty twenty-three. It should look a little bit more modern, more interesting, more competitive, more on par with what, you know, we want to see in this city. I don't think this is very inventive. I don't think this is very creative. I also think you're cutting in five units under a threshold for IZ that's in place for a purpose. I think there's ways that you can either make some of your units smaller. I understand there's a market for larger units. I live in a larger condo. I get it. You can also though, add in, if you want all of these qualifications, you want a denser building, you want this large lot, you want a PUD, then, then bring it, then, okay, then we're going to bring IZ, then we're going to do fifty-two units and we're going to do it. I think in today's day and age, this is a very kind of passe project and I, it's kind of, it's, we see too many of these and you guys asked for all these questions, recycling. I mean, every building has recycling now. There's not like much outdoor space for the people who even live in this building. Personally, I don't, I don't think this, I think you guys can go back to the drawing board. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Smiley.
Yeah, thank you, um, Chair Olson. My, I, I have a similar, similar thought about the amenities. They don't, they seem, they don't seem like enough to me, um, having a lobby space or a common space. And a few outdoor seating spaces, it doesn't seem like amenity, uh, honestly. Uh, now for the green roof though, um, I don't know, uh, I apologize if I missed that. Were you intending for that to be, uh, also a common space, um, to be used by residents?
The green roof would, would simply encompass the, the areas that are adjacent to balconies, adjacent to outdoor areas. So they would, uh, many units would look down onto it. You know, we do have some setback areas on the second floor that units would look onto that. Uh, then it would include area on the, uh, uh, top level as well.
So it's, it's not necessarily like you're not using it as quote unquote amenity deck. Uh, it's more of a, like literally just, um, uh, water, uh, and rainwater absorption and
Correct. That is, yep, that is correct.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I mean, I personally don't know how we are evaluating the amount of amenities, um, in this case. My other thought is, which doesn't, is not sitting too well with me is that, and correct me if I'm understanding this wrong. But one, um, basically, one, um, variance is being requested to for something else that is not in line because you're trying to make that premium work. So because you want the extra premium points for mixed use, then you're increasing the amount of commercial, which then needs a variance, which, so it's just like, it's like, um, kind of rolling a little bit and it seems like a, um, a condition that is being, uh, it just doesn't make sense to me to want to offer a variance in order to offer a premium. Uh, so it's, that's the part that, um, if I, again, if I'm understanding it incorrectly, uh, please, uh, correct me.
Well, and I think, uh, if, if I may, um, you know, we, the amount of commercial space is not actually the variance. Uh, the variance is required because we are asking for a space larger than four thousand square feet. So we could, we could, if we divided it into four, four sections of four thousand square feet or less, that would comply with the zoning ordinance as, as I understand it. Admittedly, it's simply because we just, we just don't have a tenant, uh, tenant lined up at this point. So it's, it's trying to, it's trying to just maintain as much flexibility for leasing, uh, leasing that space as possible. That's, that's kind of the gist of that variance. So. So we, we would be able to be a mixed use building, um, and, and, uh, achieve that premium if we were to buy, to, to divide up the spaces, uh, into smaller commercial areas.
I see. Um, uh, I, I did not understand that correctly. So I apologize. I had my understanding was um, maximum area total regardless of how many, how many times it's being divided. So.
And I guess that's just my understanding. So if there's, if that is incorrect.
That is correct. The OR two zoning, which is, you know, it's an office residence district. So it's really looking for neighborhood serving retail sales and service uses. That would be a maximum of four thousand square feet in area. So asking for one space that sixteen thousand square feet would need a variance. If they had the four spaces though, the variance would not be required. That's correct.
Got it. And I guess, uh, if I may ask one follow-up question then. Since, uh, you mentioned that you don't have a tenant lineup, which I understand in this, uh, market right now. So is this space, are you planning for this space to be designed in a very, very flexible manner then so that, if you have someone, then you can in fact divide up the space and according to their need?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, a question for, uh, Kimberly again. I'm so kind of get my hand, uh, my head around the, um, amenities issue. So I see from the proposal of the developer that it, he lists off twenty points being achieved, uh, ten for enclosed parking, five for a plaza, uh, three points for decorative, decorative or previous paving, uh, one for a water feature and one for recycling. Are those, are those points that are in, um, uh, city regulations somewhere right now? Is that, those numbers?
Yes. So our planned unit development chapter provides a point value to various amenities. And so different amenities are weighed differently.
Okay. I, as a, as a sidebar, I agree with Commissioner Marwa. It's time to remove that one point for recycling. It's, uh, surely everyone's got those. And then secondly, so the, the twenty required, is that also in the ordinance?
Yes, it is. So the way we get there is there's ten points required just to establish a planned unit development. And each exception requires five additional points.
Right. So, so, um, so this, as proposed, this has twenty points, the required number. So what is our leeway then, uh, on, on the issue of amenities?
That's a really good question. Um, so the newest part of the PUD chapter is the portion that refers to the maximum size of an individual building in a planned unit development. And there's some additional findings that we need to make for that one that basically is asking, you know, is the building, you know, with this maximum building size being exceeded, is the building designed in a manner that actually mitigates that building size? And, you know, do the amenities provided really accomplish that? So it, you know, for the most part is a fairly simple math equation, except for that maximum building size question.
Okay. So, well, thank you. Uh, so first of all, I, I'd associate myself with Commissioner Marwa's comments. I, I think the, I, this, this can be, uh, a very appropriate building, uh, and build and use in this neighborhood. It is a na- natural extension of, um, of fiftieth and France in a way. But, um, when I saw the, and I, I don't want to insult the architect here, but when I saw the, um, the original, the first picture in the presentation, I, I'm pretty sure I've seen that somewhere in Golden Valley in Office Park. I mean, it, that's, that looks to me like it's, uh, it belongs in Office Park somewhere in Golden Valley or Plymouth. And it, 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 there's a lot of mass there. And I, it, uh, I, I don't object to the building height, but I sure object to the, the amount of mass that is there. And then something, something innovative on the part of the architects needs to be done to this, I think. I'm also wondering, um, I suppose we're not at a level where you get the, the public works commentary, but, um, I was concerned about seeing, uh, the parking access and egress is on the, um, on the alley. And we're talking about forty-five units worth of cars as opposed to, I think, what's five or six or seven car, uh, houses that are there right now. That's going to put some, um, some stress on the, on the parking use, on the, sorry, the alley use, which comes to the issue of neighbors. What is, have the neighbors seen this proposal yet? And this is, it's not, not a question, it's actually a comment. And then i- if they have or have not, I, I am also worried about this issue of, um, choosing a zoning that avoids consent of the neighborhood. This is, this is a large structure. It's different than what's there right now. I think that the neighborhood needs to have a, a considerable say in, in this. What else, I think, I do think that, yeah, the frontage needs to be broken up. I, I do worry about it's, um, the, uh, the comment about, well, the, the market study shows this is the area that'd be good for this kind of housing and, and for large units. It's probably, uh, a market study that shows it's not a good idea to have affordable housing near too. But I think it needs to have it. And so I'm concerned about the, um, forty-five units rather than fifty. So right now, I, I mean, I, I like the idea, but I don't like the proposed execution. I think it needs a lot of work, frankly. And I do, uh, I am concerned about the, what, uh, the avoidance of the affordable housing requirement. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Uh, Commissioner Sweets.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, um, a couple of similar comments, I think, and then, um, some other ones. I, I do think that this is a big building, um, combining a number of lots, obviously. I think that I'll get to the architecture stuff in a minute, but I, I do think the massing of it is very, very large. And, um, to go back to, uh, Kimberly's comments on this, you know, the comp plan was, uh, intentionally developed to create some predictability here. And this to me, um, kind of at its base feels like a building that is too big for the space that, that's, that we're talking about here. I'm not saying that an apartment building and retail isn't, isn't a good idea as an extension of fiftieth and France. I understand that. But as you go the other way on France, it, it's more, um, neighborhood and things like that. And I think, I think that that's sort of what's contemplated by that. So I think this is one of the things that the comp plan was hoping to avoid, which is all the big things going in the area. You know, the same areas that are, you know, desirable neighborhoods, um, at the expense of other ones. I totally agree that the amenities offered don't add up to what, um, what, what, the, what the request is, um, for the planned unit development. Um, it seems to me that those are exactly the kind of amenities that people who are paying good rent and high rent should expect in a building. I think that's just, you know, marketability. So I, I would agree that those don't match up. I also am not an architect and don't want to be offensive. I don't think there's anything wrong with the building necessarily. I do agree that it looks suburban. And I think, you know, uh, maybe the flip side of timeless is, you know, indistinctive also. Something that could have come from any, any time. And I think, you know, um, I think a little bit, you, you might've gone a little too conservative on that for me and obviously for others on the group. That sounds like that's an issue for a number of things. Um, one thing that, um, to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Ford said, one thing I found a little bit not modern or contemporary in the description of this building. And very, not very twenty forty was that this is a building that's designed for people in the, who are already in the neighborhood to move to in the neighborhood once they want, once, once they want to go to an apartment. And, and what, what, whether it's intentional or not, what that reads as is that when the people in this very nice neighborhood don't want to take care of their big houses anymore, they can sell that and stay close. And I, I don't think that that matches, um, the spirit of new development in Minneapolis very generally. And I don't think that really goes along with the comp plan. Whoever, you know, it should be attractive to anybody who wants to live there, you know, and not really a feeder for the next stage of life for other people. That's my opinion. I wonder how people in the neighborhood, I had that in my notes, also would react. I know that there was a very strong reaction to something, um, just on the other side of the border in Edina, that is a big building, you know, that's, you know, really close, really, really close to where this is. I know that's a different city with different rules, but if you live there, it feels like the same neighborhood. Um, and I'm sure people consider that the same neighborhood. And I, I would venture a guess that And I, I would venture a guess that perhaps some of the target audience that's intended to live in this building would, would like that. But I'll bet there's a lot of people who wouldn't either. And so those are kind of my comments on that. But I do want to stress what I said at the beginning, which is that the point of the comp plan is to spread out, I think one of the points is to spread out, you know, really nice pieces of property and good developments to parts of the city that aren't already so dense. And I think that's why you're running into the problem with needing all of these approvals. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweetsie. Commissioner Caprini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to be super brief. I just wanted to say I completely 110,000% agree with every single comment that the commissioners have made. If I was to go on any further with my comments, I probably would embarrass myself, so I won't. I hope that you're able to go back to the drawing board and really consider the size of the building, the materials that are being used. It does look like a dentist office. Actually, I think it looks like a dentist office in, that's not important, my oldest dentist's office. And what, I think what kind of rubs me the wrong way, and I realize that this part, part of it is about my feelings and that's not what we're here to express, is it just feels kind of sneaky how you chose to go with 45 units instead of 50. And the area where you were using your cursor circling around, and you spoke about, you know, that's a place for people to stop. And you didn't use these words, just kind of hang out and just, you know, do whatever. I'm wondering, who, who are those people? Are those people that are just walking down the street? Or are those people that, only the people that live in the building? Or, you know, have commercial space there, have access to that? I didn't catch that part. But at the end of the day, my mind starts to think about the what ifs in situations like that. So, so I would appreciate if, if, if you went back to the drawing board and, you know, came back with something a little less large and included affordable housing. This is a city of Minneapolis. I'm not sure if either one of you gentlemen live in Minneapolis or not. It's none of my business and probably doesn't matter, but to anyone, except for me. But yeah, I, I appreciate all the comments that the commissioners have made. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Caprini. Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions? All right, I'm not seeing any, so thank you to the development team.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have one more item tonight. Our final discussion item is item number seven, 26th and Bloomington, 2603 Bloomington Avenue, and staff is Mailing Smith.
Hello, I'm just gonna get everything ready here. Okay. I'm gonna try to make this full screen. Okay, good evening, everyone. So this project is 2603 Bloomington Avenue. And I guess I'll just start by saying this is a little bit different from the project you just saw because it's located in the C4 district. So they're already in commercial zoning, so they're not going to be dealing with some of the setback issues and coverage issues that you were looking at on the France project. So just wanted to clarify that. So they're in the C4 zoning district and also corridor four built form overlay district. This is a six-story mixed-use building with 79 units. And then the ground floor includes 12,000 square feet of retail uses. Looks like they're proposing adult daycare as well as childcare and some retail and office space as well. There would be 85 enclosed parking spaces. That's both underground and there are a few spots that are enclosed on the first level as well, off of the alley. So as I said, this is at the intersection of 26th and Bloomington, C4 zoning, some C1 on the block, and surrounded by residential zoning districts. This is the built form overlay district map. So you can see that this is located in the corridor four. There's a consistent corridor four along the Bloomington Avenue corridor. And this is how the six-story building appears in a rendering on that corridor. Here's the floor plan provided by the applicant, I think. Yeah, that's probably the best one to look at right now. Well, I'm gonna go actually here. So you see that there's a drop off off of the alley and then three, or multiple commercial tenants on, on the ground floor. There, it leads to underground parking as well off of Bloomington. The second floor has an amenity space, an outdoor play area that we'll talk about in a little bit, but that would be used for both residents and probably the childcare center that's on the, the ground floor. So this is a really interesting diagram provided by the applicant. So in the corridor four built form district, the maximum FAR that you can have without any premiums is 2.4. So that's the image on the left. The middle image shows what, you know, a hypothetical bulk would be allowed with an FAR, with achieving all of the three premiums. And that's what they're proposing to do, get to 3.6 by right. And then they're also requesting to increase the bulk of the building, of the site to 4.15 through variance. So that is one of the things we're going to ask for your feedback on tonight. One other thing to note is that they, just like the previous building you were looking at, they're proposing to increase the overall size of a building. So this is a site that's already also beyond the 28,000 square feet that's allowed in corridor four. So in order to have a lot area more than 28,000 square feet, you have to do a planned unit development. And so they're, they're requesting to increase the size of the building through the PUD. And so they, you know, they are proposing some premiums and then we'll ask you for some feedback on the requested premiums as well. So here's the floor plans that we already looked at a little bit. The upper levels of, as you can see, is a C-shaped building, six-story building. They would require an administrative height increase application as well to get from four to six stories in the corridor four built form district. And I will just summarize kind of all of the amenities that they would like to propose. So for, okay, so for the premiums, I'm going to start with premiums for floor area ratio and for the administrative height increase. So the first one is affordable housing. The second one is mixed-use commercial and residential. It appears to meet that amenity premium, I should say, sorry. And then the childcare center. And so those are the premiums that they're applying for, for the FAR and height increase. And then for the PUD, they are proposing active liner uses as part of a parking garage that's worth 10 points. They're proposing underground parking, but as you can see in the memo, we don't, we don't believe that it does meet that amenity point. But they, they're probably okay without it. They have the outdoor children's play area for five points. So total, they need to have 15 amenity points. And right now, just like, first glance, it might meet, it might meet the 15 points. But I think we do need some more feedback from the commission about the use of the outdoor children's play area and whether these amenities are related to the overall increase, you know, relevant to increasing the overall size of the building as an individual building in the PUD and also the overall bulk and height and length of the building. In addition to those applications, they need, they will likely need some variances to reduce the required front and rear yard setbacks. They're showing some outdoor terraces on the alley side, so we would have a question about that. Variance to increase the maximum floor area from 3.6 to 4.15 in site plan review. So in my feedback requested area of the memo, you know, in general, I don't want to, I think that it's more important to maybe talk about the overall scale of the building. We can talk about really nitpicky details about like, you know, does this technically meet the premium and amenity for different PUDs, for different PUD amenities and premiums? But I think the, the overall conversation is really more about, is this the appropriate building for corridor four? Are the requested premiums and amenities appropriate for what they're asking to do? And so I'll just, I'll rest at that and I'll turn it over to you, Vice President, or to the applicant, whatever you'd like to do.
Sure. Quick question, Mailing. What do you mean by active liner uses?
Thank you. So we want, we would, we would award that point if they have housing office or other active uses around the perimeter of all floors of a parking garage that face a public street sidewalk or pathway. And any just district where liner uses are already required on the first floor, points shall only be awarded for liner uses on all other floors above the first where parking is located. And you can't have false displays or windows. So in this case, they do have a parking garage, it's only eight spaces. So I guess technically they would meet that. You know, if they got rid of this, they could also get some, the underground parking premium. So it's kind of, you know, I guess, there are so many hypothetical situations. But yeah, technically they would meet that, that premium that they're asking for, or amenity, amenity.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer has a question.
Yeah, so your third feedback request was in regard to, you say, the lockout patio slash terrace on Level 2 require variance. Does this or any other setback variance request along the east and south sides of the building pose a negative impact to adjacent residential uses? So just wanted to hear more about that. I mean, I feel like previously we've been, you know, not disreceptive, but pushing for, for patios. So I just wanted to hear more about what, what we're on that, what you're requesting.
Right, so they are required to have a setback of 13 feet to the center line of the alley. And so this would, I think they're probably still determining how this patio would look, if it's a terrace or if they're individual patios. I don't know what that would be, but it, it seems to me like they will need some sort of setback request. But I, I don't know if staff even could consider that individually without knowing the answer to the other questions first about bulk and height of the overall building. That's why I, you know, I regret a little bit putting it in the memo. But, you know, I think that maybe it, it could be talked about tonight, but I think the bigger question is just kind of how everything else relates, because that might also play into whether this has a big impact on the neighbors. But, but, you know, feel free to comment on that as an individual piece of the application if you'd like.
I don't have any comment on it yet. I'll wait to hear what the applicant has to present. Thanks.
All right, well, if the applicant team would like to present, they can go ahead now.
Hi, everybody. My name is Elise Mira. I don't, I'm not sure if my camera is open. I'm not sure that you even want to see me or need to see me.
We can see you near you.
Hi, my name is Elise Mira. I'm a project manager in, in the VJR Architecture Firm. And I think that instead of presenting the building that you guys saw already and Mailing really did a great job presenting it, I, I want to jump in to really, in my opinion, the really unique and wonderful and beautiful Minneapolis fairy tale story that this building is telling. And maybe before that, I'll just touch on, I was listening from the beginning and senior planner, and I don't want to mess up his name, Adele, I think, I believe, was talking about how you guys adopted some comprehensive plan. And I got very excited because this building is really, really, really answering, I don't know if I can even like point all of the comprehensive plan policies that, that we, that this building is really going to support. But, but first things first, this, the story of this building is that we have a minority owner of this piece of land that, that all of the intention that she has here is to give back to her own community and to give back community effort. She made the slide for herself here and instead of building 150 micro units and max her, her profit, she is building for her, and the need for the community that lives, that we all know live in this specific neighborhood and this specific pocket. A lot of Somali families that have a lot of, you know, multiple kids and big families. And this building, instead of being 150 micro units, it is 79 units of two, three and four bedrooms, which is in an extreme need for our city because it's, it's not a product that we're doing. We as architects, I mean, we are putting every, you know, other week, we, we get, you know, North Bay and Yellow Tree. And we're working with all these developers and doing one bids and, and micro units. And this is a very unique product that we really raised our eyebrows. Really? That's what you wanted? And yes, the purpose here is really to maximize what can she give back to her own community and which is, in my opinion, just a beautiful story. So the whole point of us asking to maximize FAR and even going beyond that and maximizing height. So obviously, we're, we're trying to comply with the premiums and ask everything according to the premiums that in rebuilt form was approved, I must say, in the middle of the design process of this building. And, and the things that we are working with the new built form is to try and lessen the impact of that building. We realize that, that we're asking for more, but we have a very good reason to. And that's to, to give it back to this community. What we did try to do here in, in, in meaning to lessen the, the bulky, I read the comments, and to lessen that is to create that C shape, which is almost creating a, a really 40 to 45% of the length of the building recessed so much back that it's almost giving us, if we have... Should I share my screen? Is that allowed? Can I do that or?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay, I didn't, all of a sudden, I'm realizing you guys see me. Is that working?
We don't see your screen. We do have our packets, so we can see the renderings if you, if you can't share your screen.
Okay, well, that's...
I can also get mine going again if you want.
Oh, yeah.
Do you like me to try?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, yes, if you're just, you know, just the rendering is telling, I think, a really nice story. And Mailing, you showed before that our, you know, we took an extra step to show what this building, oh, hi! What, what this building could have been if, if we just, you know, comply with the premiums, it would be just a big block that fill all the site that I... To be professional and not, I'm just gonna say that I heard your comments to the applicant before me, we tried to avoid that big blocky look and to create, you know, a separation. We almost have two separate buildings here by, by recessing our C shape facing west. I want to answer maybe a couple of questions that I heard you guys are talking about. And Mailing was pointing out the, the parking. I think that what our intention to do is to have that underground, the level one parking, not as a parking. It's not, we really don't... It's not, we really don't need the PUD points. We have plenty of other amenities that we, that we pointed out on the package that we want to give regardless if we need to or not. But I think that we will qualify for the underground parking because our L1, it's not going to be a parking spot. It's going to be more like a delivery and drop off area. And maybe, you know, this is going to be a child and an adult daycare. So God forbid if we don't need to use ambulance and stuff like that. But it's basically circulation and, and delivery and, and so forth. It's not going to be, we don't really need the parking. Affordable housing, we just going to say that for now, our, all the intention is to give and even more than what we need. I, I don't want to commit at this point, but the intention is there. I hope I'm covering it all, but really I think that, that the beautiful story that we're trying to tell here is that we, we realize we're asking more. We're asking to maximize, but this is going straight back to the community. All comprehensive plan policies, access to housing, access to employment. This is the, the businesses that exist in this building today are going to go back into that same building. We're not displacing businesses. We are, we're returning them all here. The community that lives in this area, they are going to enjoy that. The amenity deck, I know that we don't need to prove it now. We'll probably prove it in the LUA package. If, if, you know, if we, if we need to, but we will show that our amenity deck intention is to be a playground area for the childcare and for the building tenants as well. And it will be way above 600, 1600 square foot per the requirement. It's going to be, if not 70 to 75% off the roof deck itself, which is 5,000 square feet. So access to housing, access to employment, access to commercial goods and service, visual quality of new, new development in that neighborhood, I think, would be really great. Public safety through environmental design, open spaces and new development. We're going to have lighting. We're going to have some really nice features, artwork, decorative fencing. As when it comes to the PUD points that we don't ask for, but we are going to give is obviously, and I, and I heard the comments before, but we will have, you know, climate resiliency building standards, renewable energy, art feature, living wall system that we're planning to do on the south facing wall towards the residential. Reflected roof, which is a lot of buildings are doing now, I know. Shared bicycle and e-vehicle charges at the, at the garage and the loading areas. Decorative fencing on the, on the amenity deck. I'm sorry. It's been a while since we presented in front of the crowd. I think that, you know, the, the whole point of this presentation was to really present the story and tell you guys the story. I don't, because, because the, the package, we do try to tell the story over there, but whoever is listening to this don't necessarily know that. So it was, to me, that's the biggest message. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer, go ahead.
All right. So I'm going to skip the third, you know, item, item three for feedback requests since, you know, we need more information, I guess, on that. But just generally like in the, in the past, we've been promoting patios that I, I would generally be inclined to unless there's a good reason not to. Going into this, I did already have pretty strong opinions about feedback question number two, which is the question, can the outdoor play space be used for both the childcare center and the residents? And I feel absolutely, I think that's, you know, a really great feature to have. I, like, I, I think the important thing for this type of space is that it be safe. So you want to do whatever is necessary to ensure that. But I think it's great to, you know, have multi-general, multi-generational spaces. You know, you want an area where you can have, you know, your seniors around to like, you know, look over and, and like play with the kids while, while they're there. So like, I, I would definitely say yes to that. To the first feedback request, you know, looking at the aerial map, this does seem much larger than areas around it. So just wanted to note that. But I feel like the applicant has sold me on this because it's really seems to be focusing on family oriented housing, which is one of the big things that we wanted to see with the premiums specifically for, for daycare. I, I think, you know, the need for family oriented housing is, is really important in, in Minneapolis. Something that is, is lacking. We, we have a lot of units that are oriented, especially toward young, young single adults. I think we, we really want to promote that and to enable people to live in the same place as, as the daycare. So by providing a lot of two, three, and four bedroom units and by providing affordability, that makes me inclined to, you know, support more housing, more, more flexibility at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Marwa.
Yeah, hi. A lot of my comments agree with what Commissioner Meyer just mentioned as well. I'm also inclined to, as compared to the, to the last applicant that we just saw, you know, with the offering of these larger units, but also making them include that there's affordable units there. And being able to make this project feasible for a woman developer also is really important for me, seeing that happen in our market. And knowing that those same tenants will still be there, the ones that are being displaced by this building current, with this new development, will still have spaces. I really appreciate all those community oriented elements that you guys are bringing into this project. I do think that's really important. I feel like this project much more so upholds a lot of the goals of the 2040 Plan and what we want to see as community developments that happen. My only comment, I know it's not one of the requests for feedback, but it's just about the white metal siding personally. I don't love that material. I think we've seen a lot of that kind of very plain metal siding across, across the city. I love that it's a Somali woman developer. Maybe there's some cool color palette that can kind of come in that reflects that and kind of more of an ode to that heritage even, and just some kind of more interesting design element on that. I think it's a great project. That would be my comment, would just be about more mixing, making a little bit more of a visual interest. I like the metal, or not the metal, sorry, the wood siding looking aspect of it. I like that wood element. Maybe the reverse those or something. I think the white is very stark. And my other comment would just be about planters and green space around the building. I know this is just a rendering right now and that might come in later, but it looks very, as large as this massing kind of looks. Not seeing any tree planters or green space planters around it looks, just kind of makes it look even bigger and not as in the neighborhood if there's some trees. Are you guys, and the applicant can speak to both of those comments. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, you, you're absolutely right. It's, it's something that we kind of, I, I didn't initiate a conversation with a landscape architect yet and, and several. So it's, it's really pre-designed. You're right. I, I could have, you know, rendered some trees there and planters, but I, I, I don't like to cheat, because I don't know, you know, like it's, it's the expertise of, of different people. You know, I, I could have assumed that there's going to be like, you know, six or seven or eight trees there and there's a bus stop there. You're right. Absolutely. There will be planting, there will be trees along that, I think, you know, probably street lighting, whatever we're going to, whatever. But I promise in the next, next round of renderings, you'll, you'll see more green on the streets.
Great. And my other comment was just about the metal siding.
Yeah, about the metal siding. I think, you know, we went through some, some variations. It started with all being dark and then we kind of changed to bronze. And at a certain point when we went, I, I, I don't know that it's going to be white, but when we got to the lighter colors, from some reason it felt like the building felt lighter and it helped us to, to convey the message that, you know, we're trying, really trying to relieve here the bulky, what, what, what we knew going to be a comment. So I think that the brighter color helps. You know, Mailing was my senior planner on, on NICO, the project on Nicollet and Eighteenth, where we have a lot of, you know, blues and just a lot of game colors. You know, I think that we tried to do some games here. I think that the, to get a less bulky feeling, the bright color helps. But I, but I, we promised to keep on exploring that.
Thank you. Nothing further.
All right. Before I go to Commissioner Sweetsie, I think Kimberly has a comment.
So I mostly just wanted to reiterate the comments that I made on my presentation on the France Avenue project about, you know, having projects in the corridor for built form districts that really look like projects that belong in the corridor six built form district. And I think there's a lot of similarities here that I know are likely not lost on the commission. But I did just want to highlight, you know, especially in this instance, this is a full six-story building adjacent to low density residential. And the amenities are different and there are some differences here. But the number of similarities here do lead staff to believe that, again, this is something that would be more appropriate in corridor six than corridor four.
Thanks, Kimberly. We'll go to Commissioner Sweetsie.
Well, Kimberly kind of beat me to it, but I wanted to point out, just make a comment about the principles of consistency, which are important in the work that we do here. And I see, you know, almost no distinction other than the area of the city where this is and what are some kind of defined uses for the first and second floor of their space. But otherwise I, I see it as, as the same. I mean, you look at the picture of the, the aerial with it just jutting out of the neighborhood there. This is, you know, the same kind of thing, although arguably this, this neighborhood and area is more densely populated than the one we're talking about at 49th and France, which to me is a stronger argument that this doesn't belong here. Again, thinking of what the 2040 Plan put out in terms of predictability and things like that. It, it's just too big for the spot. And this, by, by virtue of the plan and, you know, the, the code now and the guidelines calls for a smaller space, you know. I, same kind of thing. The amenities seem to me, you know, things that are appropriate for a building like this as opposed to things for which we should be looking, you know, other, at, for points. And then also I will say, I don't know how far this is getting into our business really, but to comment on the, the thing about the outdoor play area for residents shared by the daycare, that raises a lot of issues for me. You know, there are issues about the security of play areas at childcare. I don't know if we're talking about mixing these things during the day, but anybody who's ever had a kid in daycare knows that the little kids aren't supposed to be out at the same time as the big kids. And then if this were something that were open later to other people, you know, there's a possibility that things could get damaged and be, so while, you know, some of that can work and the multi-generational thing with an adult daycare and all that, you also can't have random adults wandering into a secure daycare area either. So that, that would have to be fleshed out a lot more for me in terms of how that would actually work. But I agree completely with, with Kimberly and, and I really don't see any difference between the principles that a lot of us were invoking so critically on the last project and this one. No offense, but they just look the same to me that way.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweetsie. Commissioner Smiley.
Yeah, both Kimberly and Commissioner Sweetsie kind of beat me to this as well. I will reiterate the comments while I, I appreciate the intention as Commissioner Meyer and Marwa put it and just kind of like bringing people in the community, like giving them space. I don't think this fits in this area in like the, the, most of the buildings around it are not even like, some of them aren't even two stories. So I don't, similar to staff's question, I don't see a practical difficulty here to go with the higher mass for this building. I have to say, between this building and the previous project that we were looking at, I do appreciate that, that little bit of a breakup of the C shape of the building and that amenity deck. But I have the exact similar concern as Commissioner Sweetsie with sharing the playground area with both security and also kind of mixing up the, considering this building being more of a multi-generational, potentially lots of families with kids. I don't even think that such a play area will be sufficient for the residents themselves, let alone bringing additional need from the daycare. So that, I guess that's my comment for, for the two questions that were asked in the feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Smiley. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. Yeah, I was struck by the, the same thing that Kimberly and Commissioner Sweetsie and others have talked about the, about, it's really in many respects similar. Although, I mean, it, it is, it's big and it's bigger than it's meant to be, that it should be. And so we have to find, you know, I'd like to say yes to it, but we have to find some reasons for it. And I, I do want to acknowledge that the C shape helps on the, the mass of the, the building. And the, it has affordable housing rather than avoiding it, affordable housing. And it has large family units. And as Chris has mentioned earlier, you know, affordable housing developers would love to be able to find, affordable housing advocates rather, really point to the need for affordable family size units. And this provides some. So there is, there are a lot of reasons to, we want this to work. But I think we're not quite there yet. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions? All right. I'm not seeing any thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. That was our final item. Kimberly, are there any staff updates?
There are no staff updates. We will be bringing an update to the next Planning Commission meeting. I think Jason informed me that there had been a request about bringing a map related to the SRO ordinance to the next regular meeting of the commission. So we will bring it to that next meeting as requested, but nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments?
Yeah, I have a quick question. As, you know, offices are going back to work, Alyssa, looks like you're back. What is the plan for the commission?
So that's a great question. The easiest answer that I can give you right now is that we don't know. So there are some changes being made to the open meeting law at the state level. And then our state clerk is working with the city attorney's office to and then our state clerk is working with the city attorney's office to interpret them and develop some policies and then practice some options and how things might work. Uh, so I can tell you that staff is going back into the office September seventh. It's likely that we will be having in-person meetings in and around that time. Um, we're hoping to be able to give you as much advance notice as possible though, when and if that does happen. So the next meeting on the issue with the city clerk and the city attorney's office is on the twenty-second and I'll hopefully have an update for you all after that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, without objection, um, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Our next committee of the whole meeting will be Thursday, July first, twenty-twenty-one, and our next planning commission meeting will be Monday, July nineteenth. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.